Welcome to the June 8, 2023 Palmer City School District Board of Education meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Roll call please, Mrs. Nusyoun.
Mrs. Bratz.
Present.
Mr. Kreis.
Present.
Mrs. Schwert.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present. Dr. Smiley, can you please confirm this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
It is currently being livestreamed.
Thank you, sir. Can you please monitor the livestreaming throughout the portion or throughout the meeting? And if there is a problem, please speak up immediately so that a technical difficulty can be addressed.
I will.
Thank you, sir. And with that, we leave it up to you, Palmer Brown, sir.
Okay. We have two schools tonight to recognize some outstanding achievers. So we're very grateful for those families who have joined us from both Aces and from Thorough Park. We asked principals to recognize their most outstanding students over the course of the school year. We're very excited tonight to have presentations from both Ms. Sabo from Aces, Mr. Bickley from Thorough Park. We will also recognize some parents who have really gone above and beyond to support our staff and our students and our schools. And so that'll be part of this presentation as well. And we will start with Ms. Sabo.
Good evening. Thank you so much. I am so excited to be able to present these five students from our Aces program who really have just demonstrated.
Amazing achievement both in their academics but also in their behaviors and social skills as well. So the first individual I'd like to call up is kindergartner Jacob Atkins. Jacob is receiving this award for meeting all kindergarten math standards and continuing to progress beyond grade level. Jacob has amazing background knowledge, often being able to teach even the staff about the world of biology and space, two of his favorite topics.
All right. Next, I'd like to call up Julie Mullins, our second grader, who is receiving this award for her increased reading and communication skills this year. Julie is destined to be a teacher. She's always making sure the schedules are correct, lessons are accurately followed, and all classmates get a turn in participating. Julie, come on up. The next student is our fourth grader Autumn Agrusa. Autumn is receiving this award for her 50-point increase in the Ohio State Test in English Language Arts. Additionally, Autumn has demonstrated the skills needed throughout the school year to navigate and follow her daily schedule independently. She is a positive model for her classmates, encouraging everyone at Aces to smile. Our seventh grader Lincoln Staley. Lincoln is receiving this award for increasing his performance level category in English Language Arts on the Ohio State Test. Lincoln is persistent and perseveres in all areas of academics as he continues to build his knowledge. He's always kind to his classmates and willing to support them when they need a friend. And then our other student Jonathan Padless is a sixth grader. I actually just received a text message that they're on their way, so hopefully they'll make it. Jonathan is receiving this award for increasing his performance level category in English Language Arts on the Ohio State Test. Jonathan is full of smiles and has exploded in his language skills this year. He's also always ensuring that our learning environment at Aces is clean and tidy, and everything is in its place, allowing for productive and distraction-free learning.
No, no. It's thinking maybe these... Nope, not yet. Sorry.
Good evening. So it's really always awesome to be able to recognize our students for whatever we have going on. There's sometimes there's lots of different reasons to honor students. The students today, all 10 of them, are really high achievers academically. So whether it's in the classroom with their grades with their teachers, or whether it is on a state assessments or the benchmark assessments, they're all high achievers. So rather than just talk about their grades and their high scores, I asked each teacher to provide a little blurb about each one of our students. So from our KLA, our kindergarten launch program, Zaden Novak. Come on up, Zaden. Zaden has a contagious energy and enthusiasm for learning. He actively participates, thank you, during all classroom activities and exhibits great leadership qualities. He has excelled in his AIMS Web assessment, scoring in the 98th National Percentile for Early Literacy and 92nd National Percentile in Mathematics according to the Kindergarten Ratings. So that's kindergarten ratings, and he was in KLA. So that is what should happen at the end of next year. Zaden models respect, responsibility, and ready to learn every day. He is also a great singer and can really bust a dance move. Our next student is Connor Barnes. Is Connor here? Don't think Connor is here. Connor is a kindergarten student. He came into kindergarten prepared. He's a fluent reader, knows all of his sight words, and he is able to solve math problems quickly. He is a role model student both inside and outside the classroom, who shows he is respectful, responsible, and ready to learn. Our next student is another kindergarten student, Olivia Albrecht. She is here. Olivia is an outgoing, kind, and very responsible student. She always comes into school with a smile and a funny story to share about her time at home with her family. Olivia started kindergarten already able to identify all letter names, letter sounds, and numbers 0 through 20. She has continued to demonstrate mastery of kindergarten skills throughout the year. She enjoys reading and solving math equations in class, and she strives to do her best and is an excellent role model to those around her. Our first grade student, one of our first grade students is Audrey Reese, who I also don't think is here. Audrey is a smart, inquisitive student who loves to learn and excels in all her subjects. In reading, she is well above average in the 92nd percentile. In math, she also achieved well above average in 96th National Percentile. Audrey's writing is exceptional. She is thoughtful, insightful, and thorough in written and verbal communication, has a talent for expressing her ideas clearly. She is a kind and caring student who always looks out for others. She is a good friend to all of her peers. Her leadership skills are outstanding. Congratulations to Audrey. Another first grade student, Lincoln D'Antonio, who I think is here. Yep. Lincoln is in the 98th percentile for reading and the 88th percentile for math. Lincoln is a high-achieving student that participates readily in class. He is excited to be in class and enjoys working with others. Lincoln has shown a lot of growth in all areas this year, both academically and socially. Congratulations, Lincoln. A second grade student, Stanley Kuzmicus Finley, Feeny. Oh, he is here. Good. Is that me? Stanley is a wonderful boy. He is excited to learn, has so much background knowledge. He passed through addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division in the extra math program with ease. Stanley was able to maintain honor roll through all four quarters in second grade. He is a supportive classmate and great friend to all. Stanley scored very high on his math scores all school year. He was part of the gifted program and did amazing in that, too. I'm very proud of him and sad to see him go. Congratulations, Stanley. We have two third grade students, and our third grade teacher wrote poems, which is great that I get to read those. Alexi Rose. Is Alexi here? I still have to read the poem, I guess. "Her math map score was 198 to start. She continued to shine like it was a work of art. She succeeded in winter with a score of 219 and a smile. Alexi took on more challenges and worked with style. In the spring, she continued her math journey. Just you wait. She took it again and scored a 228." Congratulations, Alexi. Way to go. Mrs. Sedlax, third grade class, Thorough Park Elementary. A second, third grade student, Paul Jusek. I don't see either. But another poem. "Paul has worked so hard this year. Let's stand up, shout, and give him a cheer. He took his time and did his best, got the scores back, and rocked the test. On the OST in the fall, he had a 69. In the spring, he got an 84, and that is mighty fine." Congrats to Paul Jusek and Mrs. Sedlax, third grade class. Our next student is a fourth grade student. This student is recognized because he made it all the way to the States for our PCA, PT, PCA, PT, PC, PTA Reflections Art Contest. So Jason Rizzo Sinatra, come on up and be recognized. Very rare for a student to make it all the way to the state, and he did a great job with that. Congratulations, Jason. Another fourth grade student, Nolan Readinger. Nolan has the ability to comprehend the world in ways that exceed the typical 10-year-old. He excels in all subject areas. His strong sense of curiosity leads to enthusiastic and creative problem-solving solutions. Nolan is not only gifted academically but socially. He is patient when his peers ask for help. He takes the time to help his classmates understand and clarify topic skills they struggle with. Nolan's intuitive mind shines through with great conversation, sense of humor, and the ability to connect with others in unique and different ways. Good luck, Nolan. Your future is bright and just beginning. All right. And we have two parents to recognize. The first one is Justine Hock. Justine has been our PTA president for three years? Two years? It feels like three or four, I'm sure, for her as well. Yes. But she has been highly involved from that capacity. But not only that, she is always around the building, always willing to volunteer, and has raised two outstanding daughters. So we are very happy that Justine has been at Thorough Park the past few years, but she is moving on to Hillside. So congratulations. And thank you, Justine. Our second parent is Julie Fandrick. And a teacher actually wrote a blurb about Julie. "After having both of her daughters, I have seen her volunteer for every function activity that she's ever done in class. Her positive energy and patience is amazing. She has dedicated so much time to school functions, such as the book fair. Not just one day or year, but every year she is there, usually for the entire week. She has also volunteered for various field days and activity nights. Been a wonderful support in the classroom." Above and beyond that, she was a big part of our Reflections Project. She came in for felt like you were there for two weeks, three weeks, two months for a long... Yeah. She was there every day, working with our teacher to help students work on and submit projects for the PC, Palmer Council PTA Reflections Program. And we had a lot of students move on to go down to state. So congratulations. Oh, and she designed our coloring contest. Thank you, parents and fam... Actually, Ms. Sabo, did you, is your other student here? Let's get that next student.
What did you mean? You want your phone?
We have one more set of recognitions tonight. We actually entered five of our local businesses into the Ohio School Board Association's Business Partner of the Year competition, and all five were recognized for their outstanding partnership with the Palmer City Schools. We have one that actually was able to attend tonight, so we'll call him down. John Yurku from John Michael Photography. Come on down. John's partnership with the Palmer City Schools and indeed most of the Palmer community is pretty legendary. I think you cannot walk real far without bumping into somebody who had their senior picture taken, or their wedding photos, or some type of, you know, event memorialized by Mr. Yurku. He continues to work with us. He handles our athletic photographs, but he also handles senior photographs and does a phenomenal job when students come in with their cap and gown the night before graduation, and he puts together a very impressive portfolio for them. So, John, we're very grateful for all of your contributions to our Palmer City Schools throughout your career, and thank you for coming this evening. We will briefly recognize the others as they were not able to attend tonight. The next business was St. Michael's of Woodside. And the Woodside Event Center at St. Michael's has been a wonderful partner and supporter of the Palmer City Schools Foundation. Since 2013, they have hosted our foundation's major fundraiser, The Taste of the Towns. The staff at St. Michael's has been extremely kind and supportive to us over the years, allowing us to rent their venue at a very generous cost while providing exemplary services to our guests and foundation volunteers during the Taste of Towns events. So we're very grateful for the Woodside Event Center at St. Michael's. The next is PSE Credit Union. Oh, you are here. I'm sorry. I didn't realize. Come on up. Thank you for coming. Among their contributions, certainly they handle financial matters for a great deal of employees within our organization. However, beyond that, they were instrumental in helping us to start an elementary school banking program, which has really been an exciting development in our elementary schools. We're very grateful for that. They also work on our Business Management Administration Advisory Board through our Career Tech Programs and the Business Management Administration Program. They provide student internships for our students. So we're very excited for that. They also provide meeting spaces for many district meetings. So thank you very much, ladies, for coming, and thank you for your Next is Sports Focus. And I just, the gentleman, Michael, who runs it, is not able to be here this evening. But we often get ideas to have T-shirts and somehow need them, like tomorrow. And that's really unfair to do to a business, and yet, time after time after time, Sports Focus comes through for us. They always give us a phenomenal price, but more importantly than that, the quality of their product is superior and the service is exemplary. So we give Sports Focused a round of applause. And then finally, and I'm sorry they weren't able to be here because we see them every week, and we're very grateful for Tony's Family Restaurant and all of the partnerships that they have. We host a weekly breakfast with the school administrators or community leaders at Tony's Family Restaurant. Beyond that, though, they also provide catering services for our schools often. If we have a professional development day, they'll provide breakfast. And their prices are unbelievably low for the quality of food they provide. So we're sorry they're not able to make it tonight, but we congratulate Tony's Family Business and thank them for their partnership. Okay, friends, now is the time you're waiting for. If you were here for some type of honor, it is a socially appropriate time to depart the premises and head over to Ribbon Rock, which is the official beginning of our summer. Enjoy your night.
Dr. Smiley, can I add to the PSE Credit Union appreciation? They made a very generous donation to the community scholarship program, and that did a lot to support students, and
Okay, Mr. Vaughn, that actually concludes my reports this evening.
All right. Thank you, sir. That brings us to our retirement recognitions.
Of course, honoring our retirees is a privilege that we look forward to, and we are honored to recognize this evening, Mrs. Gwynn Haslam. If you'll come forward, please, to the stage. Ms. Haslam was hired into the district in 1997 as a monitor at Dag Hammershold. From then until now, she has held a number of positions, including having spent several years in the Special Education Department, where she created and oversaw some complex processes. Gwynn is retiring from the Student Services Office at Palmer Senior High School. A few words from her file. Fun-loving attitude, unswerving loyalty, dependable, team player, often works beyond her duties, valued staff member, thorough and professional, shows initiative, demonstrates integrity, integral member of the staff, committed, extremely capable, outstanding, and goes the extra mile, flexible, and we are fortunate to work with her. And a few words from Mr. Satell. Mrs. Haslam has loved spending the last seven years of her career here at Palmer Senior High School. She has been an incredibly loyal and hard-working member who always goes above and beyond her job description. Simply put, she does whatever is asked and does so with a tremendous amount of care and concern. In her position, Mrs. Haslam has often been one of the first people to offer assistance to anyone from our community who calls or stops by and needs direction. I've had the utmost confidence that they have always been, they have always received the best help and guidance from Mrs. Haslam as she truly cares that people love Palmer Senior High as much as she has. Teachers and staff have always enjoyed her friendly approach, even when her sarcastic humor showed. In fact, her quick humor and willingness to provoke a smile has always been appreciated. Our district will miss Mrs. Haslam as the worker she is, but more importantly, as the caring and just great all-around person that we have known so well. Congratulations
Sorry. Okay. Well, congratulations again on your retirement. That's outstanding. I hope you spend it with enjoying your hobbies and perhaps traveling a little bit. All right. Information to the board, Dr. Smiley.
Not this evening, sir.
Not this evening. All right. Communications, Mrs. Bratz.
Just congratulations to all those outstanding students that graduated last Saturday at Byers School. We were all there, and it was wonderful. It always is. It's a great opportunity. Mother Nature loves our graduates, too. It was a beautiful day, and the kids were terrific and celebratory, and all the families had a great time. So that's the biggest thing that's happened. We've also had lots of end-of-the-year activities that different, at each of the different schools, in particular at Renwood. A little bittersweet, but they retired the flag, the American Legion post from Stacey on Ridgewood. The John J. Jacobit 572 Lodge came to do the ceremony, and that was very impactful. And then we clapped out all of the kids that were done for this year and are going on their summer vacations. So those are the kinds of things that have been going on.
Awesome. Thank you. Treasurer, Sean?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I woke him up from his nap.
So while Pam bring this up. So the Senate came out with their proposal for how, which was in response to House Bill 33 for state funding. And the House bill version, we were getting $3 million the first year, then going down a little the next year, but overall was probably close to $6 million total in two years. The Senate came out with their bill on Tuesday, and it's not as generous. It's going up 1 point, almost $1.8 million the first year, but then in the second year, we're going down 821,000. So in general, we're getting about $2.8 million instead of the $6 million, the House version. So of course, these are just proposals, and they're going to do some horse trading, and we might probably end up somewhere in the middle of that. But for right now, that's what it looks like. Any questions on that?
Yeah. What would that do to us if it goes to the high end or state?
Well, I didn't include this money in the forecast at all because I don't know what it's going to be. So it would make our forecast look a little better. Depending, the House version, much better. The Senate version, not so much. But we're probably in somewhere in the middle.
That's a negative number. I don't like that.
It's a negative number, but you're going up, like in the House bill, you're going up 1.8 million, and then you're going down 800. I'm sorry. That's the Senate bill. Going up 1.8, but then going down 800,000. But you're still going up. It's still higher than the number in year '25. It's still higher than the money we're getting in year '23. So even let's say it's negative, it's still better than what we get now.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
Any questions on that?
You know what I'm going to ask you to say, right?
Hmm.
Okay. What's, just for everyone to know the amount that we get potentially versus what's the operating?
Our operating budget's around $150 million. So going up 1.8 million, it's nice. We get that, but it's definitely not going to build a new school.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Sean. All right. At this point, we open the meeting to public address the board on tonight's agenda items. Do we have any requests? Do we have no requests? Do we have any amendments? Do we have an amendment?
Do we have an amendment?
I see that. So, I move to adopt resolution. Do I need to talk about that first?
Dr. Smilak could probably address that. The amendment.
The amendment.
We just made a mistake. So, one of the agenda items is amending the calendar, and we're amending the calendar because as we get closer to the actual eclipse next year and see that it's going to be a full eclipse, depending on what versions of the reports you read, we really, this area could be inundated with tourists and visitors to come see this because it's really going to be a sort of an epicenter of the eclipse, and we, given that, and that this could really be a once-in-a-lifetime event for our families, we are going to amend the calendar so that the eclipse day, which is April 8th, will actually extend spring break by one day, and then the end of the year will end one day later. And so, that's, that's the amendment to the calendar. The amendment to the original resolution, it said that we were changing the number of school days. That was incorrect. That should not have been a statement on that resolution, so we caught that. Thank you, Mrs. Bratz, and we are limiting that statement. It is the same number of school days, just a substitute. Again, we will not have school on the solar eclipse day. We will have school June 14th.
Flag day.
Thank you. All right, so I move to adopt resolution 2023-06-253, adoption of amendments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-06-253. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis? Not here, I'm sorry. Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
The resolution 2023-06-3, 253 has been approved. Sorry. All right. I move to adopt resolution 2023-06-254, approval of the written record of proceedings from May 25th, 2023, regular, May 25th, 2023, and May 31st, 2023, special board of education meetings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolutions 2023-06-254. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-06-254 has been approved. This brings us to curriculum, Mrs. Bratz.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move for the adoption of resolution 2023-06-255, approval to enter into a contract between the career and technical education community-based work experience experiential learning program of the Parma City School District and Parma Heights Senior Center.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-06-255. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-06-255 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2023-06-256, authorizing purchase of student support materials for secondary English learners.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-06-256. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-06-256 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2023-06-257, granting authority to the administration to enter into contracts with service-based agencies for the 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-06-257. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-06-257 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2023-06-258, granting authority to the administration to enter into contracts with various educational facilities during the 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-06-258. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-06-258 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2023-06-259 as amended, approval of revised 2023-2024 school calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-06-259. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-06-259 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this will conclude curriculum for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Bratz. This brings us to business. Mr. Ruda?
Yes, thank you. I move to adopt resolution 2023-06-260, authorizing 2023-2024 membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-06-260. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-06-260 has been approved.
Okay, I move to adopt resolution 2023-06-261, approving pre-demolition assessment, design, and oversight for the asbestos removal of the district consolidation plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution 2023-06-261. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-06-261 has been approved.
All right, unless another board member has anything else to discuss, this will conclude business.
Thank you, Mr. Ruda. This brings us to finance, and Mr. Kreis is not here.
I'll do it.
There's no one in your contacts named Mr.
Sorry.
I'll do it.
That was the weirdest thing ever.
I'll do it.
Okay, thank you. Would you second, Mrs. Schwark?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, I move to adopt resolution 2023-06-262, approval of industrial appraisal agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-06-262. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-06-262 has been approved.
Okay, I move to adopt resolution 2023-06-263, approval of medical mutual renewal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-06-263. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-06-263 has been approved.
Okay, I move to adopt resolution 2023-06-264, resolution approving health insurance premium increases for the fiscal year 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-06-264. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-06-264 has been approved.
Okay, I move to adopt resolution 2023-06-265, approval of expense script employee prescription program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-06-265. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-06-265 has been approved.
Okay, I move to adopt resolution 2023-06-266, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-06-266. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-06-266 has been approved.
Okay, unless a board member has anything else to discuss, this will conclude finance.
Thank you, Mr. Ruda, for filling in, and Schwark for seconding. Legislation, Mrs. Bratz, please.
All righty. Mr. Nucio already addressed House Bill 33, which is now in the Senate regarding the biennial budget, and the House likes education better than the Senate does, I think, because the Senate has proposed to increase voucher funding by $181.5 million more than the House version. This is public education, I guess I should have said. So, that voucher amount will go to fewer than 10% of the students in the state, and traditional K through 12 education, school district funding will be reduced, or is raised by 245.6 million, or it's less, I'm sorry, it's less than the House proposal, by 245.6 million, and traditional schooling serves more than 80% of the students in the state. So, that's an, you know, unfortunate, hopefully that'll tick up, we'll get a little bit more money, as Mr. Nucio had suggested, maybe before this is all done, and, but it's concerning for us. It also restructures the Ohio Department of Education, which we've talked about before, into a cabinet-level agency, and that will be renamed the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, and it drastically changes the roles and the responsibilities of the Ohio Department of Education. And it also proposes to restore the mandatory retention provisions under the third-grade reading guarantee that had been eliminated in the House version. And I guess, I think that'll be it for tonight. Yep.
Okay.
Talks about most of the things.
So, nothing else then?
Pardon me?
Nothing else?
That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Unless someone else has something to talk about regarding legislation.
Anybody? Nope. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Bratz. Human Resources, Mrs. Schwark.
I would like to move to adopt resolution 2023-06-267, approval of the following certificated exhibits, confirmation of certificated replacements, confirmation of stipend amounts, acceptance of certificated resignations, acceptance of certificated administrative resignations.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-06-267. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-06-267 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2023-06-268, confirmation of certificated administrative appointments and replacements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-06-268. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-06-268 has been approved.
Can I say a few words?
Absolutely, you may.
First, congratulations to Dr. Snyder, who has served us admirably as the executive director of operations in human resources. He will now assume the title of assistant superintendent. His duties will primarily remain the same, but the designation of assistant superintendent, I think, carries a certain sense of gravitas throughout the organization, and we're very happy that he will assume that role. This is unfortunately predicated by Dr. Strzepko's eventual departure to a different school district, which we will talk about at a later date as we honor her work. So, this is a change in organizational structure. It is not an addition of a position. It is simply changing titles and roles in a very slight tweak. But congratulations to Dr. Snyder. You certainly have earned this, and we're excited to work with you in this new position. Next, we have three additions we usually really like to promote internally, and we've had very much success in doing that, but every now and again, it's great to infuse talent and infuse a sense of sort of refreshment and new ideas and new mindsets from other organizations. And so, we're very excited to promote three gentlemen from outside of the district, two administrative roles with us. These will all be deans of students, so we will read a short biography of all three, and then ask you to just stand and kind of wave at us and say a few words if you would like. First is Robert Yo. Bob resides in Macedonia. He's a graduate of the Euclid City Schools. He obtained his bachelor's degree at John Carroll University in elementary education. He then went to Kent State for his master's degree in industrial technology, and just recently obtained his educational leadership certification from Indiana Wesleyan University. He's taught in the Cleveland Municipal School District, Carmel Clay Schools in Indiana, that actually sounds like a really good ice cream flavor, Carmel Clay, and most recently in the Euclid City School District. Bob possesses a wide variety of technology-related skills, and he's utilized them in his past positions by creating his district's technology curriculum, and more recently, integrated coding and robotics into his classroom curriculum to align with the work towards STEM accreditation. He will be a dean of students at Densler Elementary, and we welcome you, Bob. Michael Gildo. Michael resides in Olmsted Falls, where he also graduated high school. He obtained his bachelor's degree from Ohio State University in history. He continued his education at Ohio State and received his master's in education. He also obtained a master's degree in counseling from Liberty University, and finally, obtained his educational administrative license from Baldwin Wallace. Michael has been an educator, coach, and athletic director in the Midview Schools for 20 years, and served many of those years as a school counselor. Welcome, Michael. Welcome. We look forward to your work at Hillside. And Aaron Brown. Aaron resides in Mayfield Heights. He graduated high school from Grand Valley High School in Orwell, Ohio. He obtained his bachelor's degree in special education from Notre Dame College, went on to earn his educational leadership degree from American College of Education. Aaron has worked as an intervention specialist for the Grand Valley Local School District, and most recently, at the Euclid City School District. Aaron coached football, wrestling, and track. We welcome you, Aaron.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited to start this new journey.
All right, welcome. Welcome aboard.
Aaron will join the staff at Shiloh. Mr. Griffin is excited to have you aboard, so congratulations to our new additions. We're really looking forward to working with you. We have a very strong administrative ranks here, and we look forward to the additions that you will make to them. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Welcome, everybody. Welcome. We look forward to working with you. All right, so that brings us, Mrs. Schwark, to the next one. I was almost ready.
Okay. I move to adopt resolution 2023-06-269, approval of revised administrative salary schedule.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-06-269. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-06-269 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2023-06-270, acceptance of certificated retirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-06-270. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-06-270 has been approved.
I move to adopt approval of the following classified exhibits, confirmation of classified appointments and replacements, and confirmation of classified resignations.
Second.
Did you read the number?
I did, didn't I? Resolution 2023-06-271.
Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Schwark.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-six dash two-seven-one has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution two zero two-three dash zero-six dash two-seven-two, acceptance of classified retirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-six dash two-seven-two. Any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, can I say something real quick? There's some person, Mrs. Tippi, that's retiring. She's very special to, especially classes of nineteen ninety-one and nineteen ninety-two. So on behalf of all the kids that in those classes, congratulations to Mrs. Tippi on her retirement. She's well-deserved.
Awesome.
Thank you for allowing me to say that.
Oh, you're most welcome. You can say anything anytime. One of those people. Except, it's up to you, Angela.
So we have a motion and a second to adopt, comments are done, so roll call, please. I think that's where we're at.
Yes.
Good gravy.
Mrs. Schwark.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-six dash two-seven-two has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution two zero two-three dash zero-six dash two-seven-three, approval of revised classified salary schedule for substitute employees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-six dash two-seven-three. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Schwark.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-six dash two-seven-three has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution two zero two-three dash zero-six dash two-seven-four, creation and adoption of job description for administrative specialists for buildings and grounds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-six dash two-seven-four. Any questions or comments from the board?
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Again, this is not an addition. We've just, with a lot of different shifting, we've had to consolidate some jobs, retitle some jobs, so this is not an addition to our administrative staff. It is certainly, it is singularly a different title.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Schwark.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-six dash two-seven-four has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution two zero two-three dash zero-six dash two-seven-five, confirmation of administrative specialist appointment and/or replacement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-six dash two-seven-five. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Schwark.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-six dash two-seven-five has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, that will conclude Human Resources.
Thank you. Mrs. Schwark, and I'll right back at you with policies.
Okay, I move to adopt Resolution two zero two-three dash zero-six dash two-seven-six, approval of technical policy changes. Policy number five-eight-five-five, which is student attendance at school events. Policy six-six-six-zero, school activity fund. Policy six-six-seven-zero, trust and agency fund. Policy six-eight-three-zero, audit. Policy seven-two-three-zero, gifts, grants, and bequests. Policy eight-four-five-one, student with pediculosis, right? Okay, head lice. Policy eight-four-five-three-point-zero-one, control of bloodborne pathogens.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-six dash two-seven-six. Any comments or questions from the board?
These are just, you know, revising dates.
Right, just an update, the old thing. All right, thank you. Roll call, Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Schwark.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero-six dash two-seven-six has been approved.
The following policies are being introduced for the first reading. They will be on the June twenty-ninth agenda for the board's consideration. First reading of the following revised policies: policy three-one-two-zero-point-zero-eight, employment of personnel for co-curricular slash extracurricular activities; policy five-eight-eight-zero, public performances by students; policy seven-four-four-zero-point-zero-three, small unmanned aircraft systems; policy eight-five-three-one, free and reduced-priced meals. And also the first reading for the removal of the following policy, which is policy number five-eight-six-zero, the safety patrol.
Thank you.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes policies.
Thank you, Mrs. Schwark. All right, moving right along here. So we have information requested by board members. No? Okay, great. So at this point, we open the meeting to the public to address the board with comments and/or concerns. Do we have, we have four requests, I believe? So what I'll do is I'll call you by name, you'll come up to the microphone and state your name, address, and then say your piece. You'll have three minutes to say your piece, and then once three minutes is up, your time will be up. I will cut you off, okay? Do you want to turn that microphone around? It's facing this way. So, requests to be heard for and submitted in person to the Administrative Secretary prior to the start of the meeting. All statements shall be directed to the Board President. As per policy zero-one-six-nine-point-one, comments that are repetitive, obscene, disparaging, abusive, irrelevant, and/or comments that constitute a threat will not be tolerated, and the Speaker will be asked to stop speaking and/or to leave the meeting. Please know that various board policies exist which set forth processes and procedures to be used in investigating and addressing personnel issues and cannot be addressed in public. As per board policies, we may not be able to respond directly or address some issues at this time. If information is not readily available, we will respond at our next regular meeting. Three minutes has been allotted per Speaker. Please remember to state your name and address for the record. And would, Ms. Nemeth, Patricia Nemeth, please come up.
I'd like to start with something that I have in my hand. It says, Dear Mrs. Nemeth, I regret that I was unable to attend the sixth annual science fair at the John Muir Elementary School. I understand that you are responsible for beginning the science fair program and have worked to keep this vital part of this educational program offered to John Muir students. Please accept my congratulations and gratitude for your many efforts on behalf of the students of John Muir. Also, I would appreciate an invitation to next year's program. Sincerely, Carl Hilling. I wanted to do that in precedent to what I'm about to read. I have lived in Parma for forty-eight years. I have always respected the fire police, recreation, government, and education departments, and felt that this was a good place to live. Because of this, I have always helped out wherever I could. In January twenty-twenty-three, I came to the board meeting because through parents, teachers, and students, I had heard that the board was planning some very different and disturbing plans that I hadn't heard before. I came to help. I warned you that the public did not like what you were doing, and that for several reasons, you should slow down and rethink your plans. I also stated that I did not think that the bond issue would pass. I was met with disdain and lack of listening. After several more visits, in my opinion, it became very evident to me that you were no longer interested in public input, but had become a board with an agenda instead of a board of education. Your plan seemed, in my opinion, to be to keep Normandy High open at all costs and demolish Parma Senior High. The competition as quickly as possible, so you didn't have to worry ever again about the personal attachments that you had with Normandy High and Valley Forge. It didn't seem to bother you that Normandy was in a very congested, polluted, noisy part of the city, which is not necessarily suitable for education nor congestion in this area. It didn't seem to bother you that overcrowding our schools should not happen. You also seemed to keep your plans for all this very quiet to most of the community, posting much of your information on social media, such as your rendering for the new high school, which, to many residents, do not use this. You didn't seem to care about the lack of higher education in the north and central portions of Parma, the most highly populated tax-paying areas, as you should have. This board was supposed to consider all of the Parma residents and students. What changed between spring two-twenty-one and fall twenty-twenty-two? The members of the board changed. Parma Senior High was supposed to be a recreation area with print shop, board space, meeting areas, and health components, as is stated in these manuals. The new board decided immediately that this building had to be demolished quickly, with or without necessary monies. Where was your plan B? There was none that I could discern.
Excuse me, Ms. Nemeth. No.
I will not be interrupted.
No, I'm sorry, your time is up, ma'am. Cut the microphone, please.
The building could have been used as a vacation.
Cut the, cut the microphone.
With, at, with.
Ma'am, ma'am, you have to follow the rules like everybody else, and we have three minutes. You have three minutes, and your time is up. Please have a seat. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Nemeth. Ms. Nemeth, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Nemeth. Ms. Nemeth. Thank you, Ms. Nemeth. Have a seat, please.
Because of no public confidence in you, and include leading.
Ms. Nemeth.
Education should have been.
Ms. Nemeth.
Because of this lack of confidence, it will be very hard to get future leades and bond issues.
I don't want to do this. Ms. Nemeth, you're being rude now. Can you please stop? Ms. Nemeth, please stop.
I am not.
Please stop.
I am not.
Ms. Nemeth, have it.
As you have stated in many medias, you called me this, okay?
I said you're ignorant of the situation, ma'am.
I will.
You chose to ignore it. So we're not having a back and forth. Go have a seat. Please have a seat. Please have a seat. Please have a seat. Please, please have a seat. Please have a seat. Please have a seat.
I don't speak English because I did this at home and it wasn't treatment.
You, you read something prior to, you read something prior.
I'm not being gay.
You stopped prior to it.
Come on, do it.
You stopped prior to it, ma'am.
Thank you for PTSD and all your policemen. You will not stop. I am going to be sure, show them the black work.
Look, we keep, Ms. Nemeth, show some respect, please, for yourself. It's, listen, listen, listen.
I'm not calling you illiterate.
Nobody called you illiterate.
Okay, Tom, oh, wait.
No, no, I'm not doing a back and forth. I'm not doing a back and forth with you, but you're incorrect in some of your statements. So.
It's all here. Your man.
Look.
It's all here in the newspaper.
So, so, Ms. Nemeth, I appreciate that you come up here, and I appreciate your passion. I, I.
This has been seen before.
I, I, thank you. Thank you. That's the first time I've ever been called rude.
Next thing, if I can help it.
All right. I, I accept the challenge. All right, so, so anyway, our next, that was three minutes. It was timed, and I think you read Mr. Hillings' card, which took up probably a bulk of your time. I read, but I appreciate, you need to stop yelling or just leave, one or the other. It's ridiculous. Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much for the note. All right, this brings up, now you're going to answer those.
Do you want me to just leave?
No, now you're going to worry about it.
Okay.
She's being ridiculous.
Okay.
All right, so this would be Shawna Melonowski. Is that right, Melakowski? Melakowski?
Morgan Busler.
You, you want to come up here to the?
Good luck.
Well, this is somebody else?
Morgan Busler.
Oh, come up here to the microphone, buddy. Thank you.
Morgan Busler.
Do you have to turn the microphone on?
Don't worry.
Okay.
Good evening, Morgan Busler, forty-seven fourteen Yorkshire Avenue, Parma, Ohio. I'd like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk. My point of view, or not point of view, but my point here is to talk about my petition and the historical significance of the bell tower and theaters. The bell tower and theaters have been up about as long as the school has been, so about sixty years, as opposed to seventy as the whole building, but it is racked with history. There's just so many classes who have passed through here, so many memories, all that. The bell tower's been a part of the community. It's on murals everywhere throughout the city. It's been able to be seen from pretty much anywhere. I grew up just down the street. I could see the bell tower and the flagpole from my bedroom windows since, as long as I can remember. To me, it has a lot of historical significance, but not as much as it does to the entire community. There's just so much that has happened here. I know that in the main theater, there was the fire that happened in nineteen eighty-one on March thirtieth, which unfortunately, a fire captain did pass from smoke inhalation at home at about one forty PM, which proves the connection to the firefighting community here in Ohio and in the Cuyahoga County. And I think that is very important to the community as well. Our service members have done so much for us, and it doesn't seem fair that all he had was a small plaque and some burn marks left behind about him. So if we were to leave the theater, it'd be important to that aspect. It's a part of history. And I understand that you're not very open to saving the bell tower, but we do have twenty-seven-hundred-plus signatures on the petition, which I have ran myself on change.org. And I very much understand if you are not open to listening, but I would encourage you to when I say that this is an important part of the community. We have shown shows here every fall and spring, as long as, as well as all the concerts for the elementary schools and Parma. And as long as, right now, we're in the building having our board meeting, which is an important point of where the board meeting is going to happen after this, because if you're setting up here each time, you know, it's one of those senses of it is an important building to both everyone in the sense of, I've been here, I've walked through, I've graduated from here, and in the sense of usability. So I rescind my sign to the board, but thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thanks for having the courage to come up and say something and speak. That's very good.
Can I make a few comments?
Absolutely, Mr. Dr.
First, yeah, that's a very impressive job. First, gathering the signatures. Second, giving the speech. It's not an easy, there's an echo there. It's not, it's not easy to stand and deliver as you did. I just want to make a few comments in terms of the practicality of actually maintaining this space. We recognize and acknowledge that there is an emotional attachment to the little theater, the auditorium, certainly the clock tower. In fact, we recognize that so, that, you know, actions always speak louder than words, and our planned high school, the centralized high school, would have strongly nodded to the tradition, and we had it, including a red brick facade. We had it, including a clock tower, that it was actually, you know, a replica of what we stand underneath. And that will always be the vision of what this property should become. Now, we can't, we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know when we would be able to obtain funding, but we believe in a large number of voters, not enough, but a large number of voters, agree that that is the future of the corner of West Fifty-fourth and Longwood. And we want it to have that historic value. We want it to have much of what you're describing in your speeches. I do want to point out, and again, this is not meant to be negative, it's just from a practical standpoint, there is not a demand for usage of these facilities beyond our student body. In the last three school years, these spaces have been rented a total of five times, and two of those were by a charter school for their commencement, and they since have moved elsewhere, and we don't anticipate their desire to return. It isn't something that has a lot of community usage. As you mentioned, the board room, and you mentioned, um, or the board meetings, I should say, and, and the theater shows, that, that are important opportunities. Uh, those will continue at Valley Forge and at Normandy in facilities that we will be better able to upgrade, because we will be able to save money by not maintaining a third high school. Our other challenge would be that you cannot preserve just a portion of the building without putting millions of dollars into renovation of all of the infrastructure that makes it a safe, warm, and dry environment. The Boiler Room is approximately a quarter mile to our northeast right now. The electrical facilities, the HVAC systems, all of the infrastructure that's required, it doesn't originate here. And so, you can't just maintain one slice of a school without extreme investments. And we have always tried to be very diligent in saving our dollars, so that we can maintain the best possible environments throughout our school district for our students. And even in this decision, the savings that we will have can be reinvested into the areas in which our nine thousand one hundred students actually attend. So, it is an emotional issue, and it is an issue that, you know, we, we wish that bond issue had passed, and again, the future of the, the school district continues to be that one high school. We just aren't there yet, and we've had to make difficult decisions to preserve student opportunity, because the less money we spend on maintenance, the more we can put into making sure we don't have to go back to pay-for-play, to making sure that we can keep class sizes at twenty-five and thirty, or twenty-five and twenty-six, instead of going to thirty and thirty-two. To making sure that high school students can take a full day and not have to go to four periods and you're out, because we just don't have the money to pay the teachers to be here. That will always be sort of the nuclear bomb of what would happen if we didn't have money to support opportunities that we have right now. So, we respect the emotion, and, and we respect the sentiment, and really respect the advocacy and the citizenship, but we have to make difficult decisions to provide opportunities for kids at the level we currently do. Thank you.
Could you also speak to the legality of, uh, the demolitions? Why we have to do it, when we have to do it?
If we, other school districts, and in fact, you know, if you think back to even throughout our school district, Parkview sitting right next to us. Parkview's been here for a lot of years. And so, people have asked, why the haste? We have to either populate a school with sixty percent of an educational purpose, or we have to offer it for sale. And we don't want to offer it for sale. We don't know who may buy it and who may want it, but the chances are that it's possible a competitor of a lower quality, and if you check their, their state report cards, you will see, a competitor of a lower quality, a lower performance index than we're able to provide in our school district, could potentially be a suitor of these properties. That law changed last year, July first, House Bill one ninety-nine, or ninety-nine, something like that. And it forces school districts to offer, within one calendar year, any building that has ceased being an educational purpose, sixty percent of the building. And so, that, that's the reason for this timeline. That's the reason you can't just shutter schools anymore and say, well, you know, maybe that one day we're gonna need them. You can't do that. And so, other school districts who have closed schools and allow them to be central offices or some other function, they're grandfathered in, essentially. It's why we're able to move a good chunk of our central office over to Arlington. Arlington's grandfathered in. Arlington was closed probably twenty or twenty-five years ago. Parma Park will actually meet that sixty percent threshold. We will have three educational programs there, PAX, ACES, and PAGE, our new academy for gifted. So, we are maintaining educational purposes there, but we don't have the luxury anymore to sit on properties for an extended amount of time that is not, that was taken away from us by the legislature a year ago.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, Morgan, I, I actually wanna talk to you directly. I was almost forty years old when I, um, realized that, that I was created to advocate and to not only do it, to realize it, but to actually come here and do it today. And, and I want you to really understand that this is, I'm about as sentimental as a person is, can get, right? I promise. But this is a building, and I understand that there's been amazing things gone on here, but you, the person that's gonna walk out into this world now, as a product of this, and as a product of those amazing things, and, and I, I spoke to you at, um, I believe it was a scholarship backstage, and, and I know, I know how precious this is to you, and I, and I get it, and I feel it. But what you are gonna do in the future is way more than a building. It's way more than what can be contained in a building. It's way more than, than what, um, than what memories can be, I mean, it's, please keep that. Please keep that advocacy for, for whatever you end up doing from here on out, okay? Because don't stifle that.
Thank you, Ms. Wur. All right. So, I have two more here.
I'm Shauna Melonkowski, seven eight zero six Newport Ave, Parma. I'm standing before you today as a concerned parent who has four children currently in the school system, a Parma High graduate, and an employee of Parma Senior High for the past twenty-three years. I'm here to ta, today to ask to save Parma Senior High. The district is making a huge mistake. The loss of an entire school is going to be detrimental to the city of Parma and to the school system itself. People are very displeased with this decision. Longtime members of the community were looking elsewhere to send their children, because they fear what repercussions of this will have in their children's education. Cramming more students into already full schools, currently have problems maintaining order, does not promote learning, but inhibits it. Several people have been voicing their concerns about this for months, and it seems to be falling on deaf ears. The board literally, literally responds with laughing at them and insulting them. The board wonders why their levies and bonds issues have failed, and they have repeatedly been told why. You do not have the trust of your citizens. The board makes decisions without listening to the whole community. It is not just an emotional reason people want to keep the school open, it is a rational need to keep the school open. I'm asking for the board to pause the destruction of the school and reevaluate their decision. In the very least, the board might gain some of the trust of the community back if it would extend an olive branch and find a way to save the bell tower and the theaters of Parma Senior High. This is why we created this petition. We needed to show the board that it is not just a few that feel this way, but literally thousands of people, consisting of students, teachers, staff, parents, and community members. We are not alone in our request to keep part of the school, or even the whole school, open. I'm incredibly proud, proud of Quinn for looking around his community, seeing a need for action, and showing initiative and determination as a high school student, and will support him in his endeavor. The theater spaces are still in overall good condition and can even generate an income for the district. The auditorium is a rare find with its fifteen hundred and fifty seats, large stage, full stage shell, and fantastic acoustics. Our auditorium is sought after for lar, its large seating capacity and nice-sized stage by dance studios and entertainers. The little theater is also sought after by smaller performing companies for shows. These spaces can generate money for the district, and if the district would be willing to explore the idea. Yes, they can carve out the theaters if the board is willing to do so. Again, this would be a step in the right direction in regaining the trust of the community. There would be, have to be considerations of what would be required to make this, it a standalone building. I am totally aware of that, and would even be willing to help the board explore the possibilities. I'm asking the board to at least take some time and research the possibility before moving former, forward in the demolition, instead of not even considering the idea. This would be a way to work with the community and ease the growing tension between them and the board, and this might even help in future elections and levies that you already have said that you need. These stu, these spaces are useful.
Time's up. Thank you, thank you so much. I appreciate it. It was a lovely letter. Okay, I think we have one more.
I, I just wanna say, it comes up frequently that, you know, we don't listen, we're not listening, we're not listening. Uh, we do. There, there's a whole other community of people that want, want this, um, you know, wanted a new school and are so disappointed. But, can you please be quiet? Thank you. So, here's the deal. Just because your way isn't what the board goes with, doesn't mean that we're not listening. We have all this information, we know that people, but that it's not, if it was, if it was only one side, then, you know, then, then maybe there would be a consideration, but it's not. I understand that you guys feel so passionately about this, but it's not just what you guys are saying. So, we are listening, we have that information. And to be, um, to be accused of that is honestly, like, I'm, I'm just, I'm kinda done with that, because it's, I've, I've had conversations, I'm talking to people. We listen. We listen. But it's, it's, it's going a different direction. I think we explained why we.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd just like to share again, and it.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that we could have listened more. We designed two different master planning processes. One, to come to the plan that had this with a, um, sort of a community hub, where we would keep the gyms, and we're gonna keep parts of the building. That was from the strategic consolidation process of two thousand nineteen, twenty, when we had thirty, thirty community meetings. Then, when we failed at the ballot box twice, the second time sixty-three, thirty-seven, we retooled and said, okay, how can we listen better? How can we? And, and we begged. We begged people to participate in that process. That was called Building Our Future, and those were monthly meetings from January of twenty-two through May of twenty-two. Begged people to be part of it, and I know, Mrs. Nemeth, you mentioned it was on social media, but we also mailed everyone in the community invitations to that meeting. And we also did a study, or a survey, I should say, on paper. You could bring it up on paper. We created every avenue that we possibly could to get input. The hard part about Parma will always be that we know we can't be three, so someone is gonna have an emotional attachment to whatever it is we decide to close. And it's really difficult. And none of us went into this to demolish. None of us did. But even with three million dollars more from the state, it's great. Three million dollars and a hundred and fifty million dollar budget is nothing. It's nice to have. We can't leave three. If we leave three, we've gotta cut somewhere else. And that somewhere else is exactly what I was talking about before. Opportunity for kids. So, to say we didn't listen, we begged people to participate in the process, and we hoped that one plan would catch fire. And there was only one plan that came out with any positive results, and it was one high school right here. And that's what we ran on.
So, bouncing off of that, too, again, some, something had to close, right? Three high schools don't serve this community anymore. It, people aren't having kids like they used to, it's an aging community, whatever the reasons are, we're about, what, a third of the student population is what we were. We're a third of the population as what we were when the three high schools existed originally together. Um, we, as everybody knows, everything costs a lot more, right? So, now you want to maintain three high schools, you want to, um, pay for that, pay for the maintenance, pay for the people, the staff, that people, you know, all of that, but no new money. This community hasn't passed any new money since two thousand and eleven, okay? No new money has come in since two thousand and eleven. So, you're asking us to do more with less, because we're still operating at the money from two thousand and eleven with today's up charges. Now, I don't know how you guys do your personal finances, but that's challenging. I think everybody can agree. So, difficult decisions have to be made. And, I mean, unfortunately, that, this is where we're at.
I wanna say something. Yeah, and on the comment of the schools being overcrowded, they're not. The eighth grade, ten year, about ten years ago, eighth grade was moved into the high schools, because the population was so low. We're moving the eighth grade out of the high schools, so it's going to be the same population of number of kids that were in it. Not to mention, you get so many people saying, I had a thousand kids in my graduating class when I went to that school. Okay, well, now it's only three hundred. So, if a thousand was good, how is three hundred overcrowded? It, it's not making sense, that argument. They're not overcrowded. That, that the eighth grade being in the, in the, um, high schools was one of the worst things that was ever done to, to the kids. Thank God they're out now. That's one of the good things about doing this. If they would've done this ten years ago, for ten years, eighth graders wouldn't have been in the high schools. So, yes, you might not like what was going, but it's, it's solving a problem that we've had for a decade, which was the eighth graders in a high school. Now they're back in middle school where they belong.
We're getting stuck with the reluctance of the past, that, that where decisions should have been made, that would've helped us out now. And now we're stuck with it. And now we have to make the hard decisions, and we're the bad guys, and that's fine, because ultimately, we have to do what's best fiscally and, and logistically for the district. Well, that's, you, there's, there's zero way to do any of this, to consolidate, to anything. There's zero way to do any of this, and please, everybody, it's literally an impossibility. So, I apologize that it, people hate this, and it, and, and actually, I wasn't even a part of that vote, but it, but I, but it needed to be done. It needed to be done. And the other thing that I actually wanna address is, uh, Ms. Nemeth, you said that, what has changed since this was gonna be a rec center? No.
The law.
The state legislation and the law changed. We can't keep this open as a rec center anymore. It has to be used as sixty percent educational purposes.
Now we'll go.
The board didn't change. I'm the only one that was new since that, since that plan in, uh, twenty twenty.
He's on the board.
Huh?
He's on the board.
No, he's not. He was on the board when that was done.
I'm on, I'm on year six.
He won in twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen.
I'm on year six.
I'm the only new person. There was no change of the board.
I'm on year six, here on the board.
You have questions?
This is not a Q and A.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move on.
May I ask?
No. No, thank you. I appreciate you, though.
May I ask?
No, I'm gonna go to my next person, Lisa Busler. That's you, right in front. All right.
Hi, my name is Lisa Busler. I live at forty-seven fourteen Yorkshire Avenue, Parma, Ohio. I am the proud parent of Quinn Busler. And Quinn, I'm sorry that you felt the need to have to say Morgan as her name. I am very, very proud of him.
Mm-hmm, you should be.
I do have to say that the passion that is coming from him is because of the stage, because of working in the stage crew, because of meeting Shauna. It helped him to open up and be able to come in front of you. And also, too, that experience of being on these stages is now the fire that has lit what her passion, or sorry, his passion is in going to college, because this is what he's going to do. And he is going to Tri-C for two years, and then going to Kent State for two years, and it's for digital media and production, all of it. And it's because of the stages, so that's where that passion is coming from. And I would also like to ask that, could you please possibly give us some time? I don't know if you're allowed to give us a date, but we have been working on trying to find solutions, and one of them is Governor Mike DeWine. He actually has put out a, ah, I lost my page, sorry. He has actually put out a, a grant for the arts and that in Ohio. And he, um, it said awards twenty-three million in grants to Ohio art organizations. Now, if you go farther down, it talks about that the program, which was created in partnership with the Ohio General Assembly, has a total of fifty million available. And as you go down farther, it says that funding will go toward operating cost, rent or mortgage payments, employment compensation, recu, recu, that, recruitment and more. And it says that, um, you know, this is, this is important, this is what brings people to our communities. And I know for a fact that Tri-C's theater has shut down. You know, there's others theaters that have shut down and have fallen by the wayside. So, this, I know, was, from my understanding, not even gonna be in the plans for the new mega school. So, thank you.
Well, there was, there, there actually was a very nice auditorium in the mega school. It was, it was gonna be super. It'd been state-of-the-art, and it'd been beautiful, and it allowed more kids to be involved in, in the fine arts on stage and stuff.
Okay. Can I, can I ask, was it, uh, to where it would be a combination gymnasium?
No, no.
Okay.
Performing arts center.
It was a performing arts center.
Somebody, somebody who kept passing that rumor around for two years, that in order to do that, we had to have a combination gymna, it's not true, it's absolutely false.
Yeah.
It was very annoying, uh, coming across that question, that saying that we weren't allowed to build an auditorium. Absolutely false. We were building an auditorium, and, um, Normandy and Valley Forge have auditoriums.
I know.
So, it's not like, it's not like the kids are going to lose.
I didn't go here to Normandy.
The ability to be on stage. There's just, they'll be, lose the ability to be on one stage.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
And you're, uh, good luck to, what was it?
Morgan.
Morgan, sorry.
Yeah, Quinn.
Short-term memory. Quinn?
Quinn.
Okay, Quinn. Uh, good luck to Quinn on, on his, uh, college endeavors there. Okay.
and there's no perfect solution. We absolutely need to downsize in our school district. Those of you that have been here many years realize that at some time, we had 27,000 students in the district. We now have 9,100. We were graduating at each of our three high schools, several hundred students, some years even 1,000 in the graduating classes. This year, we graduated slightly less than 800. Last year, it was closer to 700. Those numbers are startling to those of us that have been here for many years, and it is, I hope, something that everyone can recognize, the need to downsize. And we have closed several elementary schools over the years, years, half of our middle schools, and we've never closed a high school. And it is deeply painful, not just, of course, to the 70 years of students who have attended Parma High School, but I think to the community, to a lot of people. It's a really difficult thing to be in a place where we have to realize that this is something that has to be done. Funding for public education, we talked about some of that this evening. Hopefully, many of you have seen television or news stories about the challenges to public education funding across the United States, but certainly here in Ohio and for us. And even if there weren't challenges to it, our responsibility is to be good stewards of the tax dollars that are given to us. And it is not possible for us to maintain buildings because we have the attachment to them in an emotional sense. And unfortunately, that leads us to making very difficult decisions and where we are today. The fact that the state changed the law last year makes an enormous difference to what we can do. We would still need to close schools and consolidate. That would still have to happen, but there might be another alternative to...
Repurposing.
Yeah, repurposing if the state had not made the legal changes that school districts now need to abide by. And one other thing that I'd like to say about thinking that we don't listen, we've spent at least two, three years, well, three years on these plans, easily, three and a half, begging people. I've sat here at board meetings and begged people to participate in this. This is, we are charged with making those responsibilities, but this is our entire three city communities' input that is needed on how we proceed with public education in our school district. I am sorry to those that have not seen our many outreach efforts, but many thousands of people have. And many of those folks have shared their feelings, have shared their ideas, have shared their thoughts, which is something we absolutely need to do in order to make sure that we're providing the schools to the best of our ability to what this community wants. And I've said it before here, and I'll say it again tonight: because your point of view does not prevail, it does not mean that you have not been heard. We have tried, ad nauseam, I'll say, to think of different ways and different configurations, different opportunities, things that would maybe make things different. There's no perfect plan. We have three cities to consider, we have schools, and we have property where it is. We're not starting from a blank slate in the middle of nowhere where we can do whatever we want to do. We have a lot of considerations and a lot of different perspectives and points of view that people in our community have. We have done our very best and worked extremely hard at listening to everybody that has come forth, begging people to participate in this process. And those of you that have been here at other board meetings know that there have been empty seats all over the place when people had an opportunity to come and talk about things. And Dr. Smilak has had many committees. We've had town halls, meetings, we've done, we call those things where we've gone out in the community, those...
Block parties.
Block parties. There you go. Thank you. Block parties, several places, not well-attended, but a few were. So, I'm sorry to those that perhaps did not get as much information as they would have liked to have, but it wasn't for lack of opportunity. We've tried really, really hard, and we will continue to try really, really hard to hear from the community, and we will do everything in our power to provide the best educational services to our students as we consolidate and move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. All right, so, I'm not trying to close the meeting.
I was just trying to bounce something real quick off of what she said.
Go right ahead.
Okay. When she said that there were 26,000 or so students at one point, and that we also had, what, 27, Cindy, 27 schools?
31.
We have 31 schools open at one time.
Now, we have 9,000, and we have, how many? 15?
This year's 15, next year...
Yeah, right. So, this year, we have 15. So, we're a third of the student population, but half the number of buildings. So, our consolidation hasn't matched our decline in population. This is something that is overdue, well overdue. If we were to stay at the same ratios that we were back when everybody talks about how awesome everything was: 31 schools, 26,000 kids, 9,000 kids, 15 schools. So, some have to close. We just have too much buildings, too many buildings to take care of. That's simple, it's, that's it. It's just that simple. Sorry, Steve, thank you.
No worries.
And I think the amount of, I think the amount of misinformation that's out there is still clear in a lot of the comments tonight, and that's what killed a lot of this, is just the misinformation. I mean, so, unfortunate.
So, I know, you know, to talk about misinformation, I spoke to one of my neighbors the other day and asked them, I was talking, they go, "So, they're going to rebuild the school, right?" And I'm like, "No, I don't know where that idea came from, where we're just going to be able to put the school up without passing the bond." So, I let them know that the bond did not pass and that we are back to square one, trying to figure out what we want to do. You know, Ms. Nemeth, I do enjoy your letters, and I reread this thing as, again, because somewhat, I couldn't hear you a little bit, so I reread it. And, you know, some of it's kind of biting. There was, I've been on the school board now for six years, and three of those, I was vice president, and two of these now I've been president. So, there's no real change. You know, Mr. Ruda is the only one that's changed, and Angela came in after we had an incident. So, but that, she had nothing to do with any of the changes that we took place with the plans. She was not involved in those. But, I mean, and to say that we don't listen is a sad understatement. We do listen, and just because we don't act in your favor doesn't mean we're not listening. No. Let's, let me have my say. And, you know, so, I feel bad about that stuff. And I've read this here, I don't know where you got "illiterate" from. I don't know where that came from. I never said that. What I...
Where I didn't get what from?
Illiterate. I don't know where that came from.
All of you too.
I never said you're ignorant.
He didn't say "illiterate."
He said ignorant.
He said ignorant of the situation.
I said she was ignorant of the situation, and then I closed the meeting. And I thought I did it real angrily, because in my mind, I was ready to jump out of my skin, but I watched the meeting to make sure, and I was very calm when I said it. And it, just because I said you're ignorant of the situation meant that you're ignoring the situation. It doesn't mean that you're an ignorant person. That's not what that meant at all.
We've stated the facts tonight, and you're back there shaking your head. Like, you refuse to, like, listen to the facts that we have to deal with. They're facts. We can't change what we are confined under by the state and by finances.
That doesn't mean anything.
That doesn't mean anything, man. We changed it. State law changed after those pamphlets that you received. If this would have passed two years ago and we would have had a new school here, or I'm sorry, a new, the original plan, which was a new school somewhere else, then yes, this would have been a rec center. However, that was rejected. Then, the law passed, so now, we don't have that option anymore. It has to be torn down or sold. That's it. We either lose the property or we tear the building down and keep the property. Those are the only two options. I don't know how much more clear any of us can be about that. I really don't.
Okay, that's perfect. It's a good, it's a good place for us to stop.
Yes.
If I allow you to ask that question, then I'm going to have to allow everybody to ask a question, a follow-up after the three minutes, and that just breaks the quorum. So, we're not going to allow that today, okay?
She's already...
So, maybe...
Oh, my gosh. Just call the meeting.
What'd you just say?
We didn't say Normandy.
What'd she say to me?
I let you close Normandy.
Oh.
We could have done that, too.
Well, we could have closed Valley Forge.
Because we were hoping that this community would come together, and we could build a new central located campus. That's why.
Right, here, exactly.
That was one of the big main decisions, was that reason right there.
Okay. So, with that, I'm going to go ahead and move on. I'm going to move to adopt Resolution 2023-06-278 to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-06-278. Roll call, Ms. Nusiel.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Brats?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Chork?
Yes.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you all for attending.